We will now call the White Springs Grand Ole Town Council meeting. If you have a question, please.
And out here, dear heavenly fathers, we want to thank you for another day. We ask you to bless each and every one of us and people around the world, God, who makes all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
We'll call it by Claire Rivers. I'm sorry.
Glad you're with us. Glad you're with us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not hold on. By Claire Rivers, here's councilman. Where is that for you?
Here.
Councilwoman Casey Bird.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Geraldine Watson.
Present.
And Mayor Williams present, they have a form. Are there any additions, deletions, and or amendments to the agenda? I do have an addition, I would like to add for number seven, presentation or machete.
A presentation?
Yes.
What is it?
A presentation, um, it's gonna be in reference to the historical presentation. So she explained everything. Any other additions? Or additions or amendments? May I please have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I need a representative motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Now, the second?
I can't see the word second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I please have a motion for the approval of the November twelfth, twenty twenty four minutes? Now, the motion, second?
She only has one page.
The computer went down and all of them are not there.
It's open on hold because she couldn't get it.
So we'll move back to the next agenda, so let's go back up to number three. And we're gonna delete their approval of the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so now the second motion, please, to delete the approval of the minutes and move it to the next, um, meeting.
I need a representative move.
Second?
I can't see the word second.
Hey, Mr. Powell, this is for you. I got a quote bar.
All in favor?
Okay, so, uh, all the, the, the council members have the financial report. And so, uh, this is for October, which is the first month of the year. And I'm just, uh, kind of prepping. In general funds, you haven't really collected any ad form revenue yet. You paid your first insurance installment, which was twenty-nine thousand. And there's, uh, possibly some, some cutoffs that once we close out and adjust the prior year, that might remove those. But having said that, the revenue for general fund was twenty-seven thousand, six fifty-five nineteen. The, and we have departments, the expenditures were a hundred and nine thousand, seven seven twenty-four. So in this one month, the, you have an excess expenditures over revenue of seventy-two thousand, one hundred and fifteen oh five. So we, we like that to be a positive number, but I'm not as concerned yet until, uh, uh, the next month comes in and the prior month, prior year is closed out. So some of these expenditures might be payables from the prior year, but that's where you stood. Okay, the enterprise fund had revenues of forty-seven thousand, six thirty-three fifty-eight, had expenditures of, uh, sixty-three, two ninety-seven eighty-eight, uh, had excess expenditures over revenue of fifteen thousand, six fifty-four twenty-four. So, so that's your financial report. Um, because it's the first month of the year, I'm not overly concerned, but obviously we'll keep an eye on it and I'll let you know which month, if it, if it's coming back, the budget. So, any questions?
No, sir, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
So I'm gonna start with my department a little more, so I'm gonna ask Vanessa George.
Uh, the only thing I have to update is, um, pretty much off of what Mr. Powell said, we did notice it with some of the big expenditures this month. Like we said, our insurance went up, it's thirty thousand we had on, I reached out, they're gonna find out why our expenditures, expenditures went up. And that's what he was just pretty much going over, saying that some of it may be from last year, because this is the first month, um, that he's doing out of the new fiscal year. Up to the net, um, Audrey and I have a meeting with the planners tomorrow to discuss the, um, comprehensive plan that the council voted on, the phases one and two. I know, I'm gonna be off soon.
And the ear report?
Yeah, ear report, but if you look at it, you mean, you recognize this? Y'all should recognize this.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I was talking about.
Okay, so that's what we're gonna do tomorrow. And we got the ear report.
And the ear report.
Yeah. Hold it, that's it. And Audrey.
Well, it has updated.
With the, um, attorney, because she had that information, attorney discussed.
What's that?
When you get to share the party.
Oh, okay, okay, update on thequisitory was under yours, was I supposed to hear, but just pretty much same.
Yeah, it was just nothing to update on thequisitory, we had a good time, um, the council, who's one of the council, um, Jackie and the leader coordinator, all the, um, gifts, Jody, well, excuse me, um, Randolph, y'all worked on flow and gave out and did donations, gave out bicycles, Barbies, um, glow sticks.
Tents.
Tents, bears, yeah.
TV.
Oh, and a TV.
Oh, TV.
Yeah, and a TV, yeah.
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 Okay, so we got a hundred percent.
Something, something, I missed it on that parade.
I don't know, I was gonna, we in five, but I, I pretty much, I just wanna say.
In our parade.
Thank you, we, um, I asked for five bicycles and we ended up with eleven.
No.
We had. But that was not on the count, but, okay, twelve.
Y'all didn't lift, we get through this one. Cause mine was in the back because I was working with the kids and never took it up to the front.
But we had bikes and then we had the, um, a hundred and eight glow sticks, um, forty-eight bears and forty dolls. And so the kids were real grateful. And if you look at the video, it's shared on Facebook pretty much, um, I don't know, on the website.
I was trying to put it on, but.
Um, but the guy did a real good video on that and so, um, I thank council, I mean, Mayor Williams for helping coordinate that, the video setup and, but you can see the kids' faces when they were handed the bikes, like, they just lit up. One of the boys said, didn't he ask you, he said, I cannot have it, can I have it? Yeah, she was trying to give it to him and he's like, can I have it? Yeah, let's get it. Cause they didn't have any selected people, we just randomly just, just saw a bike the size of the child and just gave it out. Gave it out. But it was good and then we had, we gave out all the chili at Ballfield. And everybody for the cooks, I thank the cooks, which was Samethia, Jackie, um, Miss Winnie Ann, councilwoman Lady and my aunt.
What's your aunt's name, oh, Patricia.
And, um.
Jackie as well.
Yes, Samethia. So, yeah, thanks everybody, who led the parade. Oh, and our grand marshal was the great bond. No better fit than that title for all he does for this town.
Yes.
During the la, all those three hurricanes back to back, it was here. Um, we just had that main water break right before Thanksgiving. He was out eleven-thirty that night till eleven the next morning, you know, in the cold. It just done so much for the town and without complaining, so I tell, uh, Mayor Williams, I'm just a magician, for him to be marshal again, so.
Yeah, I see they finally got up most of the, uh, the Russian three around in the community.
We get a real stove, we ever get a dump truck, but we'll talk about it later.
Yeah, we have many, so the, uh, the old man, it's out.
He thinks the word that somebody have come to work, so Mr. Ray, he gotta stay.
I see.
No, no, are we sure, I know Ray.
So, uh, the dump truck went to the shop, it wouldn't stay running, it just shut off and finally it just got aware it wasn't running. So, we took it down there to Ethan at E and H and see if he could diagnose what was, the problem was. And he said that it was gonna have to go to a diesel mechanic. So, he recommended John Wyndham over in Lake City. And John Wyndham, he said the motor was just shot. And I do change the oil in that truck, I mean, but the truck is twenty, twenty years old. And there's all kind of grit and grime and, and the motor on the crankshaft, the motor just shot. So, I do get, let me cut the rock. This, this first quote y'all looking at is, well, actually, this is an estimate for what John Wyndham has already done. So this, this is just a diagnosis issue and everything. So what's he doing, the motor? Need to replace him. I got, uh, three more quotes, oh, two more, one, he, he never called me back before tonight. So, this is a six-point-oh diesel, long block, turbo diesel. And this. This, this next thing, this, this is the guy that's got the truck now.
A different person?
No, this is, this is the guy that took it now.
He's, he's got the truck now.
He, he called a thousand dollars to diagnose the problem.
Right, right, I see that.
Yeah, okay. This is the same person right now.
So this is what it'll be to repair it?
Right, do it. From, for, just for John.
Okay.
The, the second quote I got was from Jeff Sato and Diesel. And this, this is the one.
And so he's on the same thing?
He won.
I'm serious. Yeah, the features.
Yeah, well, I think you can see the, the estimate.
Yeah, I see the estimate, but I mean, what's the, he done, he's not doing as much as the other one, obviously.
Right.
Right, yeah. And.
And you're, you're still gonna have to pay John Wyndham for diagnosing all that, a thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's not the deal, I'm talking about this, the other part of.
Yeah, and then you also gotta pay a toll on the, the toll from John's over to Paul. And I talked to a, one of my, he's a real good diesel mechanic. And he said that John, he does the better mechanics. And he's the manager of Road Rides in Lake City on Down East. And he told me that he sells twice as many parts to John that he does than any, any other, uh, mechanic that comes in there. So that tells you how good he is. I mean, y'all decide to do whatever, but I just think since John's already got a truck, he's got four parts, he diagnosed everything. But.
So, but they didn't get what you pay for and his, his list doesn't list. It's not as big. And it's only four thousand dollars difference, it's like.
Well, it won't end up in the four thousand.
He doesn't.
It's less than four thousand because when we, um, we talked about it, and with Mr. Powell, by the time you pay the toll fee and then he got a diagnosis.
Well, yeah.
And then it's gonna end up being more.
And have a toll.
And then have a toll, but this guy, he, and, and he's the, the second best, well, not even the second best, but you gonna have the, the first best look at it. He already diagnosed it.
Yeah, it tore apart.
Diagnosed, diagnosed, seriously, he already diagnosed it and, um, he has.
Torn apart. And has it torn apart.
He has it torn apart.
Torn apart.
Do you see any of the, the gas or anything like? Yeah, I don't see the, uh, well, the starter. The gases, the gas. Pressure oil diagnostic, none of that.
This is John, this here. And with John, um, if we give him the job, uh, for the diagnosis there.
It's included in that.
It's included in that, okay.
Yeah, it won't be the thousand dollars.
It won't be, okay.
Yeah, if you look on the invoice, uh, he's got it.
He's got it included right there.
Right, okay, I see.
Cause then he gotta put it back together, they gotta tell somebody to take the back of it.
And John also honored the town's tax exemption, Jeff, he, he said he can't do that. So.
All right, so.
We just need to, because before when it was twenty-five, when we thought it was twenty-five thousand, he was like, we may have to just get another truck. And probably put, you know, something down, not as much as twenty-five thousand, put something down and then make payments towards another truck. Being that this truck is twenty years old, so I, I know y'all make a decision tonight, but I would like Ray to find out what type of warranty we'll have for nineteen thousand, if it's even, um, cost efficient to even, you know.
Right, cause I hope he doesn't say like six months.
Right.
They know something like that.
Yeah, you put twenty thousand dollars on six months, you may end up paying for a truck for the next couple of years, but it'll be a new truck, we should, it should be unwarranted.
Yeah.
And instead of putting nineteen thousand into a twenty-year-old vehicle, that is something that I would like you all to think about.
So what about this, what if we just, um, vote tonight and Ray find out what the warranty is and we can do a special meeting?
Special meeting or emergency meeting for it?
Yeah, because John won't be the one, he won't mortgage the motor because it's coming from the remade foundation board.
So it'll be, uh, refurbished. Whether it be brand new or, uh, after trade or just refurbished?
So can you find that out, you're gonna do a special meeting?
Yeah, we'll call a special meeting for it.
I would like Ray to also find out the price of the dump truck and like what we can put down with it. I know they like a hundred dollars. Well, I mean, they are a hundred thousand, but then we got the twenty, twenty-year-old, twenty-two-year-old, they would put twenty thousand and it'd break down next year, we're doing twenty, you know.
The, the other thing too is, that dump truck's always running like twenty-five to thirty miles an hour around town. That's why I have Chuck, so if y'all seen him out there at McDonald's, ain't at McDonald's eating, I want him to blow that engine out and get it up some RPMs on it because it's not good for that thing just creeping around town doing thirty miles an hour. And when I was, when I was a correction officer, I used to drive that truck to Johnson to get inmates and that's, that's the reason why. But it, it's, I mean, just like the trucks out of New York, they're, they're no good because they just use around ten, fifteen miles an hour.
All right, so.
Did he have the issues other than the motor, they have to train?
No, not that truck, no, the bed and all, I mean, I prized still one, it was forty-six thousand for that same year model. But the bed wasn't nowhere near as big as what we, uh, near, near as long. I think our bed is twelve foot, I think. And the, the one I prized was only like six or eight foot. There's nothing wrong with the trunk other than that motor.
That's it.
And I replaced the hydraulic pump, I replaced it myself back when I was, when I was working at Springfield, so around two thousand and sixteen, maybe.
What arm has been replaced on the, the hydraulic pump? Now it'll be the motor.
That's it, that I know of.
Okay. So, yeah, just, yeah, find out how long the warranty, and I will get Mr. Powell too and find out, um, economically what would be the smartest choice of the time to bring back to you all right at this age.
Okay. Ray, you doing well?
And, uh, another thing is, the sign down in the Ballfield, it said David Augman, Ballfield. I'm not sure if it, during the hurricane, it got blown off, somebody tore it off, but I know when I went down there on November sixth, to clean the Ballfield up and get everything moved and everything, the sign was laying down, face down on the ground there. And it been there a while because it was dead grass upon it. So, but anyway, that sign, it, it, it's just shredded in a piece, it's just like quarter inch plywood, all they put up there. And over the years, I think ninety-seven, ninety-eight, that sign's been up there. So, I'm gonna bring up that last council meeting, but I had some issues and I was in hospital and all that, so, but do y'all want me to get a quote on how to, you know, or replacing that sign?
Yes.
And Kathy Augman, she told me that New York might replace it because everyone put a sign up.
It may, but we can, uh, we can reach out to them. We can reach out to them first to see.
Yeah.
Like this in postures.
Really, we need a, like a metal sign, I mean.
Yeah, you need something that's gonna matter.
But I'll get with them and we can discuss that in the next meeting or emergency meeting or whatever. I just haven't had time to look into it, I've had so much for it.
Do you have anything for, um, from Steve?
Uh, no. Um, they had that emergency on, what day it was, Thursday? And, um, we had a.
Friday.
It was Friday, no, was it? Friday was parade.
It was Thursday.
It was Thursday.
Thursday. They had the life. Yeah, they were down there at the Ballfield.
Well, yeah, I did, I did get a comment out there because.
Trent was gonna do that.
Yeah, Trent was gonna do the, and.
And he did an amazing job.
When the helicopter, he stayed with that, um, ambulance.
And I seen.
With the patient until the helicopter landed.
I was working at the concession stand and I seen EMS get out of the ambulance, walk up to Trent, I don't know what she told him or anything, but Trent went and got in the ambulance.
He stabilized that patient.
He started using IDs, IDs and all that kind of stuff.
So what a lot of people don't know is our firemen are not just firemen, they are. They're, they're EMTs.
Tell you what, just tell them how blessed they are. Um, and the Trent, he talked a lot.
Amazing, I'm telling you, yes.
He's too, but Trent. He, he'll cut the fool, you know, and he's a guy, and although he comes to that kind of stuff, he's not playing, I tell you.
He actually chose the White Springs Parade over their Christmas party to drive our fire. He drove the Christmas parade, yeah, they were having that party in Lake City, but he, he knew that we needed someone to fire, drive the engine and he flew over that party, came over.
But I do know that the chaplain did say that he did a great job and they were very appreciative of him.
Whatever happened to me, I hope he don't do that.
I just wish we could have more, more than we could, but you know.
That's all I have.
Well, thank you, thank you. So now we have a presentation by the chair, okay? Thank you, Mayor, hello, everybody. Several topics I'm gonna discuss today and please feel free to ask questions and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about each one unless you have more questions, but I do have some handouts as well. Let me get the right glasses on. Okay. I'll just go ahead and pass this one out. This is, uh, why I think of passing now. This is just a little overview of what I'll be going over, so you don't have to take as many notes. And here's the next style one, this is an overview of the background on the DOS grant. Make sure I saved one of those for myself? Yes, I did. I have, I have more. And I also have, or if y'all want one, or if you don't already have one, but this is the brochure that we had printed out last spring that we used at the Florida Folk Festival to give out. And then this is the old, original walking tour brochure that was created back in the eighties. That, uh, part of the DOS grant was to place this walk through the brochure. So if anybody wants one of these, I'll pass them out. Okay, that's about it. Okay, so, I have been, it's been like a, a hurry up and wait with, uh, this whole state and the grant and everything. But I'm finally here to give you some good news. Um, I am ready to submit the, what's called the letter of concurrence. And Jack and I have talked about this and this is a very simple letter to disagree, the, um, town of White Springs agrees to have the sign and those are interpretive signs on some, some town properties.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yes, I do, yeah. But I did make another one because I knew, I thought.
But I said, do we have another?
Daddy give it up?
Uh, no, I have them here.
So.
This is what I wanted to be asking.
So you want them to vote on this tonight?
Yes.
And I'm just giving this up?
Well, yes, because it's.
So, I don't know what's left.
Yeah, you will, that's, uh, part of my presentation. Okay, in, in other words.
She should have sent the letter to me, not to Jack.
Oh, okay. All right, anyway, um, I'm here now and like I said.
So, do you have a copy of, I was.
Yeah, sure.
Copy of the mayor?
Yes.
So.
And I was waiting until the DOS grant people. And then, so what I have on this letter, and this is what I really wanted to go over, is that what we, uh, the current walking tour brochure does not have all of the, these, the new ones that are listed on here. So if you look at the letter of concurrence, one of the new interpretive signs that we'd like to put up is at the end of the, on Town, the Towneys, and I believe, and Ray, keep me honest if it's not, and it would be at the end of, uh, Weston Street off on River Road, right between Mike Betchuzik's house and Julie Clark Dick's house.
I have a question.
I just, okay, okay.
I don't even know what this grant out entails, like I've never seen the actual grant that was written.
It didn't.
Well, that was provided, um, um, Audrey, when did I bring that by, do you remember? Okay, I bought a copy of the grant.
Cause I've never seen. But I called Tallahassee and I, um, had a complaint by some citizens about, when you brought something by.
Right, yeah, and you said.
But wasn't the actual?
Yes, but I got from Tallahassee.
I'm having issues. That says what the grant, what the grant is counted for?
Yes, and we also met with the town and Joy Taylor Montgomery, she presented a present, presentation about this DOS grant. Because when we first, um, started out, we, you know, wanted to keep everybody informed and we started. I know you don't, and part of that is because things, we started in two thousand and twenty-three.
I remember when Tate asked for the letter of, um, what you call it?
Julie, uh, Joy.
No, Tate.
Tate.
Yeah, it was Tate.
What was the, what is it called?
I know, not intent, but it was, um.
Support.
Support letter.
Yeah, it was support, Joy, Joy, I think I did that as well. And so we didn't find out until. That was in the spring of twenty twenty-three, we didn't find out.
And that's the last time we seen somebody?
That's right.
And so, and you were supposed to get a call, you and somebody.
Cause you was supposed.
To be on the committee.
No, that was another committee, that's not. Yeah, that was not, yeah.
Okay, so twenty twenty-three, from twenty twenty-three until now, I'm trying to find out how, if, if nobody else, from twenty twenty-three, we haven't heard anything and the council is supposed to vote on something that you just came with tonight, I haven't even received anything. Too, you just skipped over the whole process, skipped over me, I don't have a copy of the grant, I don't know what, you're asking the council to vote and sign something that they're just looking at right now.
May I please, uh, provide you more information and answer questions? I appreciate your concerns and this has been a long and difficult process. And one of the things, I'm not going to come in front of the council and ever say, and, and say, I've got something unless I know I have it. I was told by too many people that when you're going up for a DOS grant, that until you see the money, it can go away, it can disappear. And so, that said, this, um, this I actually gave you some background on. But I truly did think that when I brought over the copy for Audrey, that it was going to be shared.
No, nothing, I don't, if people bring me stuff five and ten times a day sometime, but what I'm telling you is when, if this is the same thing, this is what we had a complaint on, if this is the same grant that I sent information to in Tallahassee, that's what I think.
And we have not.
And I, and the stuff that you brought me was not what they had sent me, like everything they sent me. So I, what I have officially is what Tallahassee sent me.
And we spoke to Tallahassee.
Yes.
And Tallahassee said the town didn't have anything to do with this.
Correct.
Okay, well, okay, so I got a question right here. There's another question. This, you just gave me this to read over, this background information.
No, I provide, this is.
I'm just saying, this is something you just handed to me, right? So just looking at this, I see something that is like different from here. But another, on this letter of concurrence, my concern is it says name of owner or designate, designate me is town of White Springs. The state said that we had no parts of this grant. You all have your own little committee. So I don't understand how we're the designate and they told Vanessa, Vanessa, back to what I told you.
They told me, I called to find out about the grant, has the grant been administered because we wanted to find out exactly what the grant entails before we, you know, we put our name out there and we're like, okay with this grant. So I called the state.
You could have called me too. You could have called me as well.
I'm calling the horse.
You didn't call her to even.
Yeah, why would I call you? Call me to even let you know. So just like you didn't call me, I called the state to find out exactly so I can get it exactly from the horse's mouth. And they said that the town was, we had nothing to do with the grant. It was all on you all. So I left it alone because.
They only wanted to place sign on city properties. That's when we had to be notified so we would know. But we're, but we're listed on here as an owner or designate. That doesn't, you can't.
Okay, this is, um, this is actually, this form has been signed by the state park for theirs, for their properties too. What the state requires is a letter stating that you agree to have your properties included on the White Springs Historic Walking Tour in the brochure and in these very expensive signs. So this is really good and positive for the town. And, and but, but this is the part the state requiring.
And the owner or designate, that's my whole point. Why is it my listed on here?
Okay, these are.
Owner or designate, town of White Springs. We sign this letter and we're in.
No, you're signing on behalf, you or Jackie or Vanessa. Well, then change the wording, right?
I have an issue with, number one, if it's going on White Springs property.
Yes.
I'm not being, uh, notified that it's supposed to go on White Springs property. I don't even know where on White Springs property. I don't even know, it could be where you stick that pole, that thing is, it could be a water line in there and you bust a water line. We have no idea, exactly. We have no idea. I just had this, um, property downtown and they want to dig and it's a, it's a path down there. So I have a problem with not being notified or being notified of the location of where these signs are supposed to go. So I can get with Ray, we can say, hey, this is, this is good, this is a good spot. You can dig here, there's water lines here. We have a lot of people just want to dig when they were doing the fiber wire and they were busting water lines just from digging. You put a hole two feet in the ground, you can get a good sign. I have a problem with not being notified. I have a problem with, where nobody in the administration knowing anything that you want to put property, excuse me, signs on our, on the town easement and we don't have any knowledge of it. I feel like you totally just disrespected the whole town administration and went over and said, hey, I'm just gonna go to the mayor and then I'm have the mayor sign this and just have the council agree to do this and this disrespecting to the council. You didn't even tell the council. So you give them a paper tonight and say, hey, I need this letter right here. I, I, I feel like that's very disrespectful. We should have been notified in advance. We should have been told location.
We should have been notified through the whole process of every step that was going on with the grant.
There's a lot of town business that's happened since twenty twenty-three. So it's not like we're gonna say, oh, yeah, we're, this is from the other day. I feel like we weren't notified. I feel like that was very disrespectful to not only myself, but the whole entire staff and the council. I do feel like that because you just, just say, here's a letter. It seems like the same thing that happened. And the plan is on a meeting when, um, but, um, Brenda was giving the letter saying, sign this letter, without even looking at the letter, seeing the letter before that meeting. That's the same thing that's happening now.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way and I apologize. There was no ill will or disrespect intended. And what I'd like to do is move forward and provide you all with the information that you need. There, nobody has made a decision exactly where the sign would go. This is part of the process. This is where White Springs thought that it would, not we're gonna go, White Springs Historic Preservation Society thought that it would make, um, really positive things for the town. And so let me just go through them and the actual placement of any sign in the ground, including on the property, people properties, would obviously be carefully, um, we've talked to Ray and make sure that we aren't going to hit those water lines. I'm glad you brought that up. That was a very good point, why should we brought that up? Because, but it's a, we probably, this is not even gonna happen until twenty twenty-five. So it's not like this. Yeah, so. Yeah, I know, but it's not gonna happen until probably, uh, uh, May or June. This whole, whole process moves very slowly and because we didn't have the, we didn't have the official approval from the D O S that we can move forward. But what they, the D O S had never told us that we needed the letter of concurrence signed prior to getting the contract from them. So I've been working with the, uh, we went through two different coordinators. This is the second coordinator that we have. And so things sat in Tallahassee, sat in Tallahassee. I've called every two weeks. I have emails and letters and, you know, phone calls. What's going on? Why don't we have this? And so it just got to the point where I was really even thinking, well, we might not be getting it. But we finally got a new person and him, I'm thinking maybe he's new at his job, but at the very least, um, he, um, is not, um, yeah, let's just say, I'm pretty sure he's, this is his first job. Cause a couple of times he's had to refer back to other people. But I should have been told four months ago that this letter of occurrence, you talk about, I know how you feel about that. And I said, you know, I should have been told four months ago that we had to have all these letters of concurrence signed before we could get the contract and, uh, from them. But, so I was working with him on the contract back and forth and then I'm saying, so I silently said, hey, you've got everything. We've talked in person, everything that you've not in person, but you need, so when do we get the contract? And that's when he said, well, I need the letters of concurrence first. And that was literally like two weeks ago. So we had some of the letters that we'd started to, um, that go around to the property owners. And, and then, uh, and it's like, okay, I've gotta get these letters right away. So the ones, so as far as that's, this letter is a very generic sign. That, um, name of owner or designate, I use the same form for property owners. So that's why you're usually the designate, one of you. It really, you know, it's, it's just somebody saying, that's what they need in their thing. So tonight I am ready to upload the documents to him so that we can get the forty thousand dollars and get started on doing this great project for the town. So, with that said, the ones that y'all are interested in, there's, uh, never, the interpretive signs are the big ones. They're either a medium size, medium size or a large sign. And they're, they're quite expensive, you can see, and they'll be on, um, metal posts. So that means they won't rot away like a lot of the smaller signs, signs have rot away in the different properties, the current, um, walking tour. And so this will kind of talk about that, the fact that the Normal College was right there on River Street, one of the first colleges in the United States and, um, I have, we've been working on drafts for what these signs would say. And of course, that would be one of the things, and I think I stated here, that overview I gave you is that any sign on the town property, you folks. I don't mean it that way. I actually looked that up. I actually, I actually looked it up. Yeah, that's, uh, anyway, okay, I'm gonna say, I was gonna try to start saying ladies, but now.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen. So anyway, I apologize. Um, I did not know that was, um, not the right word to use until Jackie was nice enough to let me know. So spank me behind the tip, a dollar jar or something. Every time I say that. Uh, so anyway, with that said, so that's an exciting new one because that's a big part of our history that made, uh, White Springs very, um, putting White Springs on the map back in the twenties. Then the water tower, where we currently have an interpretive sign there. That's Veterans Park, so that's not a new sign. But we're also looking at opportunities to change some of the, um, content of the different signs to make it more inclusive, more diverse. And so, uh, once again, so that's one that, um, we have some volunteers. Uh, Roberta Lacefield has been working, uh, Joy Montgomery's been working on these signs. Uh, Woody, Tracy Woodard has also jumped in to help. So it's, uh, it's a pretty good job and we're kind of got things, started drafting now. And then, so then the next sign, and I'm excited about this, is the Amakalee. I know I shouldn't say that one right. Um, but that would be a new interpretive sign. And that would focus on the indigenous people's history in the White Springs area. And we have the early education, new interpretive sign. And this would be hopefully on the, um, on the easement, right there between the Bullard House and the old school property line, where you have that fence and the property, and the land comes up.
And that's what Carver?
No, 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 I know it's not, no, it's not where the Carver School is, but this is what it would talk about.
Is the Carver School at the Bullard, between the Bullard and, it would talk about it at that location?
That early education.
Does that make sense when Carver is down on Hill Street? Why wouldn't you put a sign there? Well, I really need an answer.
No, and I'm going to give it to you because this is a walk, this is a walking tour and people are walking.
So they don't walk through the black community?
No, they, they, they can drive if you want the sign there in front of the old Carver School. But it talks about. What we wanted was a sign that people driving by can stop.
Okay, and then my other question, who made, who, who decided on where these signs were done? The committee, your committee?
Yes.
Who's on that committee?
Uh, Roberta Lacefield, uh, Joy Montgomery, Tracy Woodard, uh, Bruce Whitten, um, Walter McKenzie, we've all been working together.
And where's the diversity?
Yeah, where's diversity in your group? Great people now you, you got on there.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying anyone that's there, but where's the diversity?
Well, we went out.
How do you know what needs to be put in a neighborhood or something that's significant to black culture? No, but you're not, you're not, that's how you're talking, which is honestly, everything you're doing to me, it's like, it's wonderful. But what happens when you don't have people who look like the people who need to be at the table, we're left out. Honestly, it is. And you just said, you votes and it's like, it's completely. That's not right. It's not right. I'm telling you.
It's not right.
And perception is everything and honestly, I feel like we're left out. I personally.
And I feel like I can't do anything right for this town.
No. I know what you're saying. You just have to do it.
You wanna work with us and you're saying it's for diversity, but you not, you do not have one African American on your committee to make, to help make these decisions. You only have one.
Okay, that was one.
But Tate was one. You only have one.
I would say the difference with that is.
No, let me finish. I'm still talking. I'm still talking. You could still, you could have asked one of the council to be on there. Like you asked me, you and Julie asked me to be on that other one about the sign. And then I never got a call until the sign showed up and said, oh, the sign's here. You wanna do a picture opportunity?
Yeah. Cause there was nothing left to do. There was nothing left.
Okay, but my own thing is, you have one. No, I'm never gonna be past that. But the other thing is you only have one historical thing.
No.
Uh, thing on listed on here and that is the Carver. Where, what else is on here?
Black Florida Trail going through.
No, what else is on here listed for the?
It's not on town property, but it's at the New Bethel AM church.
That's not on here though.
This is only about what's on here and where you have that, is I actually do have a whole list.
I'm right here on this list.
This is property. This is the property of the town.
Okay, I'm not arguing anymore about it. We were there to make our presentation so we can get.
But I want, I want to. But let me address something that Anita said really quick. So you say she'll never get over it. I don't think you understand the significance.
No, they never, she never will.
It's been too often times that black people are used as a photo op to show diversity when we're not actually included. So that's what I think you're missing. So when she felt, when you, when you, she was called for.
And a few hours before the picture was taken, I'm working at Lake City. I can't just jump up and leave and come to take a picture.
Show inclusion, but I really was never included in any of the decision making, any, anything. I just wanted to get that clear.
No, they got the letter of, the support letter first from us.
I know.
And added me to the committee with her and Julie for that, that grant.
Right, but I wanted that to be clear.
I never heard nothing about it until the photo op. This was my whole thing is I never was included in a meeting.
Exactly. That's why I wanted to clear that up. So it's not like you just, you know, you said you're never gonna get over that. But I wanted you to understand why she can't get over that. Because it's like she's just used for a photo op to show, oh, we got somebody black, we got something black, a person here. That's what she's saying.
We actually were at the town council meeting for that photo opportunity and we invited everybody from the town council. But we invited everybody from the.
You still saying photo opportunity? Where was it? But I was on a committee one, but if I was on a committee, why was I not included in any of you and Julie's meetings for the sign and the grant? That's the whole thing. It's no photo, the photo thing is the, that's the bottom line, but the bottom, not the bottom line. The bottom line is I was never included in a meeting that I was on a committee for.
Correct.
That is, that's what I'm talking about.
Julie and I was never agreed. We pushed the grant in the line of hold for a while.
Never mind, we're not, we're just gonna.
Okay, you don't want to hear what I have to say. But any rate, so we do have.
Um, Shay, is what did you want to say?
I was saying, as far as diversity, I understand tables on it. But where is the native for White Springs, the black native? The one that can give you the information, the detailed information of what is important to us.
Good point. We, we went out and I know that Roberta was talking to different.
We're talking about.
People in the black committee. Oh.
She's talking about on the committee, right?
We, of all the, okay, members of White Springs, um, I've asked everybody at every council meeting, pretty much at all then too, who wants to join White Springs Historic Preservation Society. And then if anybody wants to be on any of the committees, they can speak up. We also, I also asked the, um, the librarian, she's not there any longer, if she knew anybody or if she was interested. So it wasn't like an, and Roberta went out there and I think she talked with you, uh, Anita, right?
She talked to me about getting with the black community to see what about historical, but that was, you already, she already talked about the grant at that time that you all.
No, no, we're not, we're past that.
No, we're not past that. You asked me what she, when she met with me and I'm telling you.
Okay, so. So let's just say we've added signs, we are making changes to that and we will have, you all will have an opportunity, either all of you if you want, or if you want to assign one of our council people to be the interface role, but you will have an opportunity. But we're trying really hard to add the diversity that you guys want.
But when you add the diversity, they want to be included in the decision making process, not just to, just to say, I got some black folks on there.
No, no, it's, it's like you, uh, probably provide a working draft of, of, of what we, of what we have uncovered through research. And we will, um, ask for your opinion and your, and your feedback and your edits. And if you have anything else that you'd rather see. So, maybe late, but you know, it just, um, it is what it is. So we've got, so as you said, we have the education, um, which is on the town property, I believe, that easement. The water tower, uh, made some revisions to that. And we're also, one of the other big things we're looking for that we've been kind of talking to the town, different people about is, um, pictures, pictures that go back in time and that can be used. And then the, um, the new park sign, then the early education one. And so that's more than just the Carver School. It's actually quite detailed. It's about the, um, the pred, predet, predet, predes, predet. The schools that came before the Carver. It's all about the black community and the small one-room schoolhouses and all of that. So I think that, um, that's gonna be a really powerful one. But we did want to have signs. But we did want to have signs. And then, of course, the women's club is the current sign, that's just one of the small signs. And then we have the Bethel AM, but that's not on the town property. So I'm here today to ask for the town's approval to, uh, have new signs put up and if not, we'll move forward. So the DOS grant, you have the information about that. Um, as I said, Audrey should have a hard copy and, um, I believe I also sent you a soft copy or maybe just a hard copy. Because it was something that I couldn't, uh, just, um, yeah, I can't remember what I had to do, but I had, I was out of town when I got that the first time. So, um, but anyway, so I will be uploading these letters and, um, there are other, we will still do these interpretive signs and if the town does not want to have on their, on their property, we will, you know, put it on the people property, uh, next to it.
Okay, so this Swan and Hardware Store thing, it says something about, um, a mural.
Uh, yes, that's my next thought.
You're talking about putting that on the Swan and Hardware Store?
It'll, okay, let's, if we're changing topic, that's a good.
No, I don't know, is this, I don't know, is this part of this grant or is this a different grant?
It's that, yes, it's a different grant and I'm so excited we got that.
You don't know much about that?
No, I'm asking, I've seen this and I didn't know.
I know, okay, okay, let me move forward and then we can come back to the DOS grant. So some other good news is the Florida Trail Fest is going to be in, um, White Springs this year. It's exactly, it's a local deal.
Whatever.
Yeah, and, uh, that, that brings in a lot of, you know, hundreds and hundreds of people. And so, the Florida Greenways Trails and Trailstown, I just found this out. They have a new passport program, so I've, uh, we can, the town would like to have a passport and have these, uh, um, what, what, yeah, stamp, it's a White Springs stamp. So that's a cool thing that I just found out about. And we'll put those up right now, I'm, um, getting some more packets from the, um, Florida Greenways and Trails program. The only thing I said to them, I said, doesn't include the list of what towns are on their thing. So I probably, what I would do is type something up and, um, and so each, each of the places that has the program has it can, um, tell the people. Because there's only like five or six, no, maybe there's more. So when it first came, I can't even remember. So, that's, uh, that's something, in fact, the, so, the, the Florida Wildlife Corridor Foundation. Back in, uh, back in January, they contacted us about becoming one of their mural towns. And as we know, mural towns are, are, murals are great for towns.
What purpose they serve?
Pardon?
What purpose they serve, you said they're great for the town?
They look beautiful, they lift people's spirits.
Okay, but let me, that's my question, before you go in, I see it says location Swan and Hardware Store. My question is, where is that going on the hardware store?
It is going to, this one will, will be painted on aluminum panel.
Where is it going on the wall? Where the quilts are?
The quilts will be restored.
Who's going to remove the quilts?
Um, Dawn and, or some volunteers and they will be restored.
Who said that they could be removed? The town put those quilts there, they are black history. Ms. Queenie Don used to hold classes out in the Stephen Foster. She did those quilts, those are in, those are there because Helen Miller got a grant to have them placed there. And that's a his, that's history, black history. So you're telling me you're gonna not take down those black history murals and you're gonna put a painting up there?
Okay, first of all.
First of all.
We're taking them down to have them restored.
And where are they going? Where will they go?
My understanding, um, Mary McKenzie.
Where will they go?
Back up on the wall.
Over the painting?
No, because the painting's not gonna take up the whole, it's gonna be ten by thirty feet. So it will be back on, and what it will do is it'll draw more attention to the.
So if the, if the mural, if the, if the quilts are on there, if the mural is not gonna take up the whole entire wall. Why, why are they gonna leave the quilts up there and then?
Because they need restoring and the location.
Who's restoring?
Um.
They can't be removed unless the town says, so first of all.
Mary McKenzie.
Do you understand that part?
No, y'all was about to say it.
No, no, I'm not saying this, but I'm just saying, do you understand that?
That has nothing to do with the other, this is totally separate.
That's a different grant, but my whole thing is, do you really understand that you have to come to the town council and ask for them to be taken down?
First of all.
Because the town council put them up there.
That was, um, it's on private property.
Okay, so he needs to come and tell us he wants them down?
Bottom line is Dawn had never shared this with me, if I had known, I would have. However, this is, um, becoming a Florida.
Had you had your diversity on your committee, you would know that that mural was up and those quilts were up.
This is a whole, a whole different, um, committee.
It's still the, okay.
This is not even, you know, essentially, but let me tell you the.
Can we just move on?
No, I'm, I'm trying to really understand, because you're the historical, you're trying to do preservation and then you're saying you're, you're the historical preservation, you want to preserve history and you want to include black history, but you want to take down the.
Black history.
Pretty much the only black history that's on this street in town to put up something else.
But they're going to be built back up on the same wall. And so you're not, and actually, it'll draw more attention to it.
It does.
I understand, but it is a project, so he wants them down, the town can remove them, but it needs to be brought to us to do that. Because the town put them up. So the owner of the building needs to come address the town to have them removed. You can't take them down for, and have them redone.
You don't want them restored?
I'm not saying that, but it has, they're, they belong to the town.
Okay, would the town like to do something with them?
That's not, that's not their discussion until tonight.
No, I'm asking you, is that, is there something?
You trying, you trying to start stir up a whole horned mess over something that I'm just making a simple fact about? You can't, they belong to.
You've known it to them in five minutes and expect them to make a decision, this is like.
And it makes, I'm not talking for you, but you're the town manager. You should be.
I'm clearly not.
She should have gotten everything first, because guess what she asked me when she said, hey, you got a letter you forgot to give me from, uh, Sharon Shank? And I was like, oh, what you talking about? She said, well, she has a letter out.
And it's in the program and.
So, you know, it, it's not right, honestly, it's just not right.
Well, let me just, uh, provide you still key information, I'm here now and thank, thank you Jackie. So, any rate, so it's a, so we have free location and what the corridor people, the foundation, looking for towns are looking for locations with high visibility and easy accessibility. And, um, Scott Gay, uh, has agreed that we could put one up at the fire station on that wall. And so that really plays into the little town, the Mokalee Park, how nice that will be for that. And Carol Saw, well, I'm just, I'm very excited to have a mural. Originally, these murals were going to be painted, we were going to have local people paint, local artists paint them and work on. And because the, uh, foundation did not provide any money. So we met with them in January, February timeframe and we were going with the idea of that we would, we would raise money to pay, uh, and then have volunteers, volunteer artists and Tay being one of them, uh, and others as well. Um, however, at one of the meetings, all of a sudden they gave us good news, guess what? We have grant money and it's up to fifteen thousand dollars. So we were not, it wasn't a given that we would get this grant money. Because once again, just like with the Florida Greenways and Trails and Trailstown, we didn't quite fit into their little pocket. And so they said they just really wanted the mural on the hardware store because it is a beautiful location. Um, so, we said, well, um, you can, you can actually get free murals for the price of one. And this artist is very, very renowned, his work is beautiful. Right now, he's doing a water, not a tower, but a water, the big round one that's on the ground in Ocala. He's done them in Jacksonville, he's done them all over the United States. And I gave you his, um, information down at the bottom, C Stanley Creative on his website. But, uh, this project would normally, uh, he would charge thirty-eight thousand dollars and he's doing it for fifteen thousand dollars. We also were able to get five thousand dollars from Hampton County, because that was the other requirement, is that we raise money from the community. So I feel really excited that we're really hard, just not myself, but other people, and, uh, to get all this grant money for the town. And, uh, so that's that. And so then we were looking at the artist as the, the, um, foundation wanted to have the first unveiling, unveiling celebration, having the, the mural on the Swan and Hardware Store to coincide with the Florida Trail Fest. And the Florida Trail Fest is excited about that idea as well. So, the, um, Janet Mo, excuse me, I may just pop in, Janet Moses, my understanding is she painted those murals, and that's what, from Mary McKenzie. And Mary McKenzie was reaching back out to Janet to see if she would restore them, because they're very, very faded. And so this is a, you know, a good opportunity to get that done. And then we will go out and raise money to pay Janet Moses to restore those. So, because I can't come out of this grant money. So we have that.
It never happened, but I just want to understand that those, if they are taken down, the town needs to know. The town needs to be there to take them down.
Right, Ray, would you like, you know.
I'm not ready to take anything down because the county, no, you're not gonna rush me.
No, I'm just asking if you would like him to be part of the people.
I can't speak for Ray.
I'm raising the glass. Y'all love the noise of what.
She's bringing it up.
I'm bringing it up there, you are not to touch those, no one is to touch those. Well, I want to understand, no one is to touch those quilts without the council and town knowing.
And, uh, uh, something else that I'm a little uncomfortable with.
Because she keeps saying they're gonna be taken down and redone.
But if they're gonna be taken down, she's saying that they gotta raise money for them to be redone.
They know what be done, so we need them, and we need the, the Di family, the, the. Everyone that is, that, that history is for to know that they're coming down.
But then if you're gonna raise money, that money never gonna be raised for that, because you're gonna use the fifteen thousand to do your mural and be like, oh, we still, we still raising money.
They can't use that money for that.
I mean, for the mural.
They can't use that money to fix the quilt.
I know, that's what I'm saying, they're gonna use that money.
It's gonna never be raised.
But then you gotta raise money to fix the quilt, that's like the church building for me.
Well, we just want the family to know when it's taken down, so they're there if they want to vote off or whatever the situation is. But the town and the council needs to know first.
And let the family know, that's not us.
Right.
That would be great, and I'd love to the families to know what we're doing to help restore their murals. And we can also put up a box.
Why not help know they're not included?
Well, the other thing is, I mean, it's, I, I didn't know that there was any particular significance to that, so why not?
It's part of it, it's part of it, that's what we're saying about it all the time. We are in a meeting and she's doing her presentation, please allow her to continue her presentation.
And so, exactly, so, but anyway, where, you talked to me, I, ah, I can't, my friend talked back.
Oh, but you searched for it.
But what would be nice to have is a plaque that also states the significance of those quilts.
Because this quilt's never going back, right? Why would you put a, why would you put a sign up there?
Because anybody who's moved to this town can look at those quilts and not realize the historical significance of them. So that's also something that we could include in the new walking tour brochure as well, because I was wanting to. So that's really good information, so.
This is what I think you're not hearing, and this is why I keep trying to say it where I think you can understand. This is what we're saying about you lack diversity, because like you said, you didn't know the historical significance. Because you don't have anybody, a native from White Springs or anybody from that quarter to say, this is historically, uh, this is our historic, this has historical significance to the people in White Springs. I'm not from White Springs, I don't have relatives in White Springs, but I do know the, the historical significance for those quilts. So what you're not hearing is this, or if you are hearing it, you're overlooking it, is this is the reason why you need someone that looks like us to represent us. That's why you need somebody to represent.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
When you ask somebody, when you ask somebody and they say, yes, which was Anita, she said, yes, I would be a part of it. But she was excluded in it, so that's why you're having a hard time getting people to voluntarily be on the group. Because we know that we're just there so you can have somebody black. So that's why you're having a hard time, see, you're not listening, I'm trying to explain it to you. But that's why you're having a hard time getting people to say, yes, I'll be involved. Because we know that if we become involved, we're just there for the photo ops or just so you can say you have somebody black. So that's why when you go in like I asked y'all, no, because when somebody said yes, she wasn't included. So people don't have time just to wait.
And then Tay was included.
Then she was excluded.
When she started, when the cemetery, they started.
For her community, then she was excluded. So, that's why you're having time, so when you're saying nobody wants, it's not that nobody wants to be involved, nobody just wants to be a token.
The, the other thing, and you brought up the cemetery, that was a, another one that we would like to, um, see, go ahead and apply for another grant, because I went through the cemetery, no, another grant, because it needs a whole. Yes, I did, and so I'm asking you, you know, I'm, this is my announcement, I want to go piece of projects for WISP that when we, this coming year.
Why can't you take one of these off or two of these off and do one of each? Do the sign at the cemetery and do one of yours, and then it feels like it's something.
But the cemetery needs more than a sign, it needs a new gate. I'd like to actually do it right and make it the historic place that it is, because it does have a fascinating history. And it deserves to be cleaned up and have a new gate and sign. And we could, we could do one of the, uh, if, if you would prefer to have that cemetery just a sign up there, we certainly could do that.
If you talk with the people, that's another thing. The community, I'm not from White Springs, I've just lived.
It's an east side, yeah, it's an east side cemetery. Have you spoken with the committee about what they want?
They have a whole cemetery.
They have a whole committee.
Well, they haven't done anything on it yet, all I'm saying is, we want to, we, we're, um, that's one of the projects for twenty twenty-five that we want to look into. So I will come back and Audrey, maybe you can provide me with their contact information, uh, would be wonderful. Uh, I wasn't gonna get into twenty twenty-five, uh, potential projects, but it certainly is, um, one that is on the radar. And so, any rate, we've covered a lot of information and I have, uh, we are actually, um, ordering currently, if things go properly for the DOS grant, thirty-six, uh, small signs, thirty-four of which will be on the walking tour. And then there'll be another, uh, couple of signs that, um.
Thirty-six going on the walking tour?
Yeah, we're increasing it to add more houses and properties. One of the, uh, ones that we are going to say, because you have to add to it, is the, the one, the little one-room schoolhouse by the library. So then the library will be on the walking tour.
The camp schoolhouse.
Yeah, the camp schoolhouse, so that's kind of exciting and have that included. And change, uh, some of the other texts and, um, so we have, you know, a, a lot of opportunities and like I said, we are in the draft stage, so this is the perfect time. That's the other reason I'm here, because finally, you know, we're, we know this is going to happen. And, um, definitely, somebody on this team wants to step up. I tell you, I won't bite your head off and I'll try not to say that.
Yeah, my God, I'm gonna step up like I'm not feeling the dude.
Because you never heard what you said, you're not getting it.
I did hear, but, and she said several times, I, what I'm feeling is that, um, feeling that, no, we're not funny.
No, I just had questions, those are real legit questions, they're real legit feelings behind them. So don't disrespect, but I ask you as if I'm attacking you, I want to know why. And I, I.
So you, but you, you feeling attacked, so you have your, but you're not, you're not, you want us to take into account that you feeling attacked, but you're not willing to take into account anything we're saying to tell you how we feel. So it's all about how you feel, to get how we feel, forget why we're not, why nobody's like.
Why Anita can't get over it. Love me, I, I mean, just like the signs at the cemetery, I got people buried down there.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm, I'm happy with the sign where they are.
No, the, the sign that's, the gate that's broken?
I probably got people. I think a little bit of people is in there somewhere.
Well, like you said, it's a potent, uh, I did apologize.
I'm not for that sign too.
Vanessa, I did apologize, and I apologize, uh.
I need an apology to have action with it, not just, um, I apologize.
I apologize and who? I apologize, and who would like to be, work with us?
I don't trust you to do it, because I feel like I'm just gonna be used, yes. And it's not genuine, it's not genuine.
It's gonna be work, it's gonna require work, so anybody want to step up? And if not, do you have somebody you'd like to have involved? This is an opportunity, folks. People, ladies and gentlemen. I know, I caught myself, it's just, you know.
Are we going, are we still going through this?
It's a lot, it's a lot, it's, it's, it's a lot, and it's, um.
Well, it's just gone on too long and.
But it's not even just that, it's the, it's, it's more things that's like underlying it. It's not understanding, it's too much. Yeah, it's like we just.
Please, accept my apology, that was not meant to be an oversight when we were doing the initial grant. We just, it got, it wasn't anything that needed to be done, because it was just filling out this form, and then we submitted it, and then we heard that.
Okay, and who, who, y'all decided what kind of sign, the color?
No, 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 no.
No, how did that come up?
Oh, okay, I was just talking about the D O S. Oh, no, I'm not, I was talking about the Florida Greenways Trails and Trails. Now, as far as the signs, so we looked around, we, we knew that the diversity was really important. And to have the, you know, black people represented, African Americans represented.
Black and African Americans.
So what is the grant you were talking about, like, you're talking about this grant?
Well, I just wanted to apologize.
I'm apologizing about.
I was apologizing for the Florida Greenways and Trails, I was apologizing because that, we can't seem to get past that.
Who picked out the sign? You and Judy, right, the design?
The design for, are we talking about the grant now, the D O S grant?
The sign for the Greenway Trails that you called me to get the photo with, who picked out that sign?
That's not a, a design, that's the Florida Greenways.
Okay, but you picked out which one, they had different.
No, 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 they did, no, no, they just provided the sign. No, we had nothing to do with that.
I just find it hard to believe it, you just.
But if you don't, if you don't, after the website.
It doesn't matter, Vanessa, that's all news.
Well, you know, this is, this is, this is.
It's all news.
I know, but I brought this in case y'all wanted another one, we had it up in the old building, but y'all want one? Because this is as important as a nation. So there's, you know, a lot of opportunity in the White Springs to help it and grow it and make it a welcoming community for everybody. Yeah, so, Simon, I have more of those, and all sorts of stickers and such. But, um, so we've got the old walking tour, I do have the list of all the different properties. And these properties are ones that are already on the, um, the historic designation that they received back in the, back in the eighties, old seventies. And the murals, that's really important and it can do a lot for the town. I can see if I'll just do the two murals and not do the, the, one in the hardware store. And as far as on the town properties, you currently have a sign at the Women's Club. You, you want that removed, or do you want that kept there, the history of the Women's Club?
We just can't make the decisions off the fly like that. We're not, you just wanna say yes, they right now.
No, I'm, no, I'm just, um, I, I don't, okay, so when would you be able to, uh, because I don't.
I'm sure when somebody wanna go out and have a site visit, they may wanna go look at the sign, you know.
We don't have anything to look at or see right now. I can send you.
What are we having another meeting for? What is the next meeting gonna be for?
We'll just say something about the Women's Club and the sign.
I was talking about why we're prolonging this, what are we here tonight for? What is she?
Nothing, because she's doing a presentation.
She's just doing a presentation, because nobody's seeing any of this.
Okay, so what about this letter?
What does she need tonight?
What, did, did you need that letter tonight?
I wanted it and.
I'm asking you to need it.
Yes, I do.
Okay, but we're not, we're not, yeah, I'm not gonna go along with signing the letter, but my whole other point is if that's what we're here for tonight, that's it. Why are we getting, what is the next meet for?
It's not next meet.
Okay. I thought y'all were talking about, we have a special meet this time.
No, I was just trying, I was saying, the information that we just got, fine, before she started, I was trying to understand this information that we just got. Yeah, I didn't understand either about the letter when we just got it tonight. That's like I said, it's the same thing that happened at the Pennington meeting when the names read off the sound of love.
And it has owner or desert me.
Well, just cross through that, I mean.
No, I ain't crossing, doing nothing.
But you know, well, I was, is she, is she in charge of the, the grant?
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with nothing I'm saying, I'm not signing nothing, and I, I'm not putting on a town letterhead. Now, does the council ask me to, I will, but then the council will sign it.
It doesn't need to be on the town letterhead.
But it says owner, who would be the owner of this? You can't take it up if you have it on here now, then there's a reason it's there.
No, because I, I made up this.
And I would advise, and they already know, and they're not, they're stretched through. I'm gonna tell you that now, she even said it's stretched.
I can get you a new one tomorrow, I can get you a new one tomorrow. But I am going to be submitting the fifty other letters of recurrence, including the state park ones and everything else, which is have the same, same information on it.
They can do that, but I'm.
Yeah, they probably got theirs a, a while ago, they get theirs tonight.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter, I'm not, I, I'm not comfortable with saying the owner or desert me, that's my.
I'm not comfortable with not knowing where the signs are going.
Uh, okay, I thought I described them in here.
Okay.
But, uh. What I'm saying, you may have described them in there, but we just got this information tonight, so I'm gonna sit here, we're gonna all take time, we're gonna discuss and read this tonight.
Okay.
Because you just gave it to them tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Vanessa. And I do appreciate all of you, and I've been really hopeful that things are changing in this town. And, I mean, I've been telling you here for over thirty-five years, I love this town, and I'm spending a lot of my time and effort working on these things, getting these grants are not easy to get, and, um, I, I want what's best for the town. We all do, I know you do.
That's the entire town, all communities.
Yeah, exactly.
You've been focusing around in certain areas, but you have not once went down in the community there. We have no knowledge of what you wanna do, there's nothing that'll be done about the community down there, and predominantly the black area. Now, you just here, on the, on the main street here, up in this community here, but not once have you mentioned anything about the whole town as a whole and your location.
For, and, well, and once again. If there are projects, if there are projects, we can definitely consider them. And we're, we're trying to do things, we've been participating in the community cleanup days, um, and there's so much opportunity. So just give us a chance and be part of it, don't, you know, what's, who said what, JFK, or that we, you know, if you have a problem with something, become part of it and make a difference, so we have that opportunity. And we would love to have more, um, black American, well, black citizens of White Springs.
When you first initiated this, you should have reached out, done a better job then, not come on in when you want to do these things and just bring it through up in our face in one night.
I thought it was.
No, you haven't reached out to the community.
I know that.
Yes.
We thought we did by sending people out into the community and asking, but, you know, but what's it enough? So, so what I need, what I need help from you is you telling me what I need to do, okay? And I can meet with you, and you tell me what you, what, what, what does it look like for me to go out into the community? Because I don't know what that means.
Well, you, you're in the community.
No, 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 but I'm trying to say going forward, I'm trying to look past any misunderstanding, any miscommunication.
It's gonna always be miscommunication if you don't see where we're coming from and, and emphasize where we're coming from. You're just like, okay, I heard you, we gonna do this, we, but I'm not, I'm done.
Well, I appreciate your time, and, um, I'll, I'll stay behind and kinda figure out what we can do next.
Thank you. Citizens on the floor, request final minutes, have Scott Gay, ordinance fifteen oh one audit committee financial statement.
Scott Gay, one oh five six five Kendrick Street, White Springs. I got a couple of points, so, back in January, I submitted an ordinance, fifteen oh one, and I didn't see it published on the town website with all the other ordinances, so, I just wanted to resubmit this to the clerk, ordinance fifteen oh one, to be vetted or whatever someone needs to do to make sure it's a valid ordinance. Is the audit for twenty-two twenty-three complete? Year end September thirtieth?
No.
Uh, the last, last correspondence I had regarding audit committee meeting was with Audrey on August the twenty-ninth. Do we have an audit committee meeting scheduled?
That's for the committee, yeah.
I don't schedule them.
You schedule all meetings.
No, Mr. Williams is the chairman of the committee, so.
So he should, I mean, then y'all should talk, he was new, he was only appointed to help out, he's new, you would have to help him. But at the committee, he's just getting on, Scott, he's never been on the committee, he's never been a town council.
I don't have the authority to call a committee meeting.
You could call him and say, can we call him? Can we have one? That's what you do, you call your chairman and say, can we have a meeting?
I do not call him directly, I sit sunshine law, I go through Audrey.
Yeah, you definitely, she definitely called me, but I told you to call him, remember, said.
Audrey, I didn't hear that, but my last correspondence was August the twenty-ninth, and someone was sick, either Mr. Williams or somebody.
It was my mother-in-law, his mother.
Okay, so that was the last I heard of. I would like to request, there's a spreadsheet in the, in the, in the budget for twenty-three twenty-four, it's called wages and E R E per payroll allocation worksheet for twenty-two twenty-three. And the, in the, the spreads, the Excel spreadsheet budget that's on the town website has a link to that, and, and I know that it's missing because the hashtags are in the cell, so I'm requesting that worksheet.
Say, what exactly is that?
But it's basically.
The wages, y'all got raises.
It's the wages, it's the allocation, how you allocated the various funds. It's just now, it's just the allocation of wages throughout.
Oh, the allocation of wages.
In the twenty, in the two thousand twenty-two audit, there was a prior period adjustment of seven hundred and three thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. Who, who prepared that calculation?
I don't know. But that would be something Mr. Powell's answer.
That's, yeah, that was, but that. Me and, uh, Michael, the accountant, J and S accountant, we did the calculation.
I would like, then I would like a copy.
What's included in that is the, um, rent and stuff.
Then I would like a copy of the calculation and the supporting detail worksheets, however, however that was derived.
He's talking about a specific amount, Vanessa.
There's a mountain in the, there's a mountain in the audit on page twenty-four of the two thousand twenty-two audit. Seven hundred and three thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, it's related prior period adjustment. I would like a copy of the calculation and any supporting detail, that how the number was derived. Last thing, in reviewing the financials through September thirtieth of, uh, two thousand, of September thirtieth twenty-three, the enterprise budget, it, it, this is off the town website, it does not look like the debt service has been paid for four of the five loans.
What, a pile of what? No, they're not, they're couple million dollars, we make payments every, every year.
Well, well, Vanessa, there's, there's no payments reflected in the year-end nine thirty twenty-three, so those payments were made?
Yeah.
I'm just letting, and the budget is not reflected as such.
Okay.
And also. There's, there's four, there's four loans that are all listed on financial statement.
Okay.
Of twenty thousand three hundred and ninety-two, this is the budget amount, twenty thousand three hundred and ninety-two, three thousand one oh two, twenty-six thousand six hundred and twelve, and thirty-two thousand eight sixty-seven, those do not reflect that they're paid in the September thirtieth year-end financial statement. So I'm just asking if they've been paid, I don't, I don't need anything else. And also I noticed that the revenue for the water and sewer fund, the forty-five thousand dollars from the county that was entered twice, did they pay, did the county pay their forty-five thousand dollars twice?
No.
Then the budget reflects that they paid it twice in two thousand twenty-three.
Y'all can give, you're not looking for that.
No, she just.
Okay, so Vanessa, you're saying that they're paid, I'm just telling you that they're not reflected as such in the financial statement.
It's our minutes, honey.
The last thing, the, the accounting, the total professional fees paid for that period of time was sixty-five thousand dollars, that's for accounting, auditing and professional service, have all the auditing and accounting, or the auditing fees been paid for two thousand twenty-two? Or do we still owe, or is the, the auditor still owed funds?
Is it reflected that it's paid or not?
Well, it's reflected in the statement, but it doesn't say that it's paid or not. Because I don't, does Mr. Powell provide a balance sheet to go with the income statement?
He does, he provides everything.
Could, could you put all that on the, on the website?
It's on the website, Mr. Powell didn't do our things last year.
The only thing that's on the website is the income statements, and there should be a corresponding balance sheet. So I would request that the complete set of financial statements be put on the website.
Yeah, that's who, that's who did it last year.
I have to give it to him.
I'm just, I'm just asking if the audit, the person who did the audit, the firm who did the audit for year-end in two thousand twenty-two, has his fee been paid? Or do we still owe for that?
We pay, we pay.
That was Mr. Powell who did the twenty-two audit, or Powell's firm, whatever.
They're doing the twenty-two twenty-three audit now, so they.
The year, year ending twenty-two, year ending September twenty-two.
Yeah, they can pay again, it's done.
Okay, all right, I have another question.
Oh, business?
Oh, business means others, but I'm having to try to share something with law enforcement.
Okay, um, as of today, there's been no information from Hampton County Sheriff Office people receiving the, uh, letter that was sent, so we have no, uh, communication from them since the, uh, since sending the initial letter terminating the agreement. So there's been no communication at all. Um, attorney Bart Jean Bart, uh, the letter she sent has not been addressed at all, so there's been no communication from them.
We have no new business, and for council, um, comments, come on, Anita. We have a, um.
I wanna end this meeting on a very positive note. Florida League of Mayors has a coin that they give to citizens, or for the mayor to give to citizens, and it's for vision, leadership, and public service. And these, these coins are very rare, and it was something that was established in two thousand and five. And the first coin that I wanna give on behalf of the town of White Springs will go to Mr. Ray Vaughn for his hard work and dedication. Thank you for all you do, Ray. We can't pay you enough, and we really, really appreciate everything that you do. Um, you keep us safe, I called you one morning at three o'clock in the morning, I know you was wondering what I was doing up, so there you go.
I was, really.
And they know we didn't have any water, um, you came right over, stayed, got Kurt to help him, it was freezing cold, they were riding the backhoe from out to, um, nutrient, I mean, it, it took a lot. Before our citizens actually woke up, they did not even realize anything happened other than what was up with me at three. But I just wanna, just let everyone know that this coin really means a lot, and this is the first one that has been given on the behalf of the town of White Springs.
Awesome.
You're on the floor, I'll pick it up.
Yeah. I was trying to hide it from you. I'm trying to call it, because it ain't work.
Did the other council member have anything, any comments, words on the behalf of the town?
If not, the time is.
If not, the time is eight oh one, and the town council meeting is.